Here's six o'clock, we have a call, we're going to call the meeting to order. Ms. Baron?
Mayor and Council, we are here tonight to ask for the final adoption of the 2025 Plan. As I look around the room, I see a lot of members of the 2025 committees, subcommittees, that spent many, many hours working on this plan. And in the final review, we have nine big moves, we have sixty-nine priority action steps, and we have a hundred and forty-one implementation steps. I know you're going to be disappointed that I don't plan to go through every one of the implementation steps tonight. I did do a PowerPoint for you that I sent out, but I found out today that Mr. Conkey actually had finished the video. And so it actually says what I plan to say in a much more interesting way, and it has some very, very good pictures of Lila. So with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to go on and just run the video and then respond to questions.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Looking to the future of Lewisville, what do you see? Jack Welch, longtime chairman and CEO of General Electric, said, "Business leaders create a vision, articulate the vision, passionately own the vision, and relentlessly drive it to completion." The history of Lewisville, Texas, has been built by people with vision and drive. When settlers came to this land on the banks of the Trinity River in the eighteen forties, they had a vision of a home for their children and grandchildren. They planted the roots from which Lewisville has grown. When business and community leaders organized an election in nineteen twenty-five to incorporate as a city, they had a vision of a community in which their families and businesses could grow and thrive. What is the vision for Lewisville today? That question was at the heart of the Lewisville 2025 planning process. The resulting Lewisville 2025 Plan tries to answer that question and to instill in our people the drive to make the shared vision a reality yet again. The intent of the Lewisville 2025 visioning process was to find out what current and prospective residents, business operators, and visitors want Lewisville to be when we turn one hundred in the year 2025. The Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan will define the city we want to be in the future and set a basic roadmap for getting there. This process started more than a year ago at the City Council Annual Retreat in February two thousand thirteen. Input was gathered through public meetings, live and online surveys, electronic forms, and interviews. More than one thousand five hundred comments and suggestions were received and cataloged. A fifty-member committee of volunteers was appointed, and they worked with city staff and professional consultants to try clearly defining a vision for Lewisville. They developed a list of major goals and recommended actions toward those goals. In the end, all those comments from the public were combined with committee recommendations, research by professional consultants, and work already done by city staff to come up with a shared vision for Lewisville. In order to make that vision a reality, we've come up with nine major areas of activity that we are calling big moves. It is these nine big moves that form the heart of the Lewisville 2025 implementation. The big moves are not listed in order of priority because all nine are considered important pieces of the overall vision. But the nine big moves are: Creating a Green Centerpiece; Extending the Green; Old Town Lewisville; Driving Neighborhoods; New Neighborhood Choices; Employment Centers; Identity Focal Points; Communications and Marketing; and Sustainability. One big move is creating a Green Centerpiece for Lewisville. As this map shows, there's the potential for a four-thousand-acre green space in the heart of Lewisville that no other community in North Texas could match. This would truly set Lewisville apart from other cities. The target of this big move is to take advantage of assets we already have that can't be created from scratch: Lewisville Life, the Trinity River Elm Fork, and the Lila Nature Preserve. With careful planning and promotion, this Green Centerpiece could create an urban wilderness that will position Lewisville to be the North Texas leader in next-generation development. A closely related big move is extending the green to connect the Green Centerpiece to the rest of Lewisville. This would use parks and trails, customized development, and other amenities to give all Lewisville residents and businesses easy access to the Green Centerpiece, and would spread this new nature-focused identity to all parts of the city. In turn, this will help attract new businesses and residents who want to enjoy a healthy green lifestyle. This big move also is important as a way to prioritize elements of the current Parks Master Plan, which contains more than two-hundred-million dollars' worth of possible improvements. We can't do everything all at once, and this focus will provide a lens through which the impact of each project can be examined. Our next big move revolves around this story, Old Town Lewisville. Old Town includes most of the areas east of Interstate thirty-five E and northwest of Business one-twenty-one, with special emphasis on the Old Town core along Main and Mill Streets. The intent is to continue transforming Old Town into a viable regional destination that preserves our history, encourages business and residential growth, and creates a special place to live, work, and visit. While some cities are investing tens of millions of dollars to create a downtown district from the ground up, Lewisville already has one. That is why City Council has made this project a priority since the development of the Lewisville twenty-ten Plan. Carrying out this big move will include encouraging suitable private development, cost-efficient public investment, drawing visitors through events, and fashioning a marketable identity for Old Town Lewisville. Every successful city needs thriving residential neighborhoods, which is the subject of the next big move. This map is certainly not comprehensive, but it gives an idea of the target areas to encourage and protect thriving residential neighborhoods. It is important to maintain the relevance and property values of our residential areas if we want to maintain the relevance of Lewisville as a whole. We need to be the kind of place people choose for their home. Lewisville is an established city, and some of our residential areas are showing their age. We need to work with residents to maintain the quality of those neighborhoods, and we need to act today to prevent possible neighborhood decline in the future. We also need to pay attention to new neighborhood choices, reflecting the wants and needs of the next generation of homebuyers. This map shows where some of that new housing stock will be located, including the Castle Hills Development, although there are many other areas where aggressive redevelopment could have a major impact. This big move is important because we need to make sure Lewisville has quality housing stock for people of all ages and all incomes. This also includes transit-oriented housing near our three DCPA A-Train stations, where residents often have a completely different set of expectations. This big move includes eventual annexation of Castle Hills. Developing a plan for Castle Hills annexation is one of the top action priorities here. We need to figure out how, and at least a general idea of when, we will add that area to Lewisville. Other priorities for this big move include targeted redevelopment that could include public investment in some cases as a way to possibly replace some aging retail centers with true mixed-use developments. It also is important to understand that while the perception is that Lewisville has more than enough multifamily housing already, some areas near transit stations or in Old Town need that kind of development. The next big move is employment centers, cutting places in Lewisville where people can find the well-paying jobs of today and of tomorrow. This map shows some of the areas that already are home to hundreds, even thousands, of jobs. It also shows areas that we expect to become significant employment centers during the next decade. The target here is to take advantage of our strengths—location, workforce, infrastructure—to enhance current employment and attract new jobs to Lewisville. Why is this important? Lewisville currently has about forty-five thousand jobs, so we already are in major employment location within North Texas. But to stay competitive, we need to continue growing that employment base with a mix of good jobs located close to our neighborhoods and highways. Another Lewisville 2025 big move is creating identity focal points at major entries into the city. This map shows the top three focal points located along Interstate thirty-five E at our north and south borders and at the crossing of Business one-twenty-one. All three create a strong first impression in the minds of potential residents, visitors, and shoppers, and all three are about to receive increased attention. The idea here is that having a series of well-planned identity focal points at key locations will contribute to a new and improved identity for Lewisville that will have a positive impact far beyond the highway corridor. These focal points will make people feel good about entering Lewisville and will encourage them to stop and stay a while. They also will spur the kind of long-term development that can carry our local economy well into the twenty-first century. Lewisville 2025 identifies three specific focal points. The first is the southern gateway, as shown on this map, running from the one-twenty-one tollway to just north of FM thirty-fourty. These zones are future elements of the Interstate thirty-five E corridor plan being prepared for council consideration. The north gateway is the interstate corridor running south from the Lewisville Lake Bridge. Some of you might have seen maps of this area showing the city's desire for a lakeside resort hotel development. That lakeside development receives strong support through the Lewisville 2025 planning process, and working toward that project is an action priority for the northern corridor. The central gateway is located on either side of the interchange with Business one-twenty-one and includes segments of Business one-twenty-one on either side of the freeway, as shown on this map. This project might require the most work because there are so many moving parts. Action priorities include working with current property owners to find new and prosperous ways to upgrade or replace those uses. The next big move, communications and marketing, was prioritized in some form by all four of the Lewisville 2025 subcommittees. The consensus was that Lewisville has a lot of good stories to tell and that we need to keep finding new and better ways to tell those stories. The target of this big move is to prepare for the communication tools that will emerge during the next ten years. Remember, ten years ago, most people had never heard of this strange new website called the Facebook, so no one can possibly know what will dominate our communications ten years from now. Expanded communication and marketing efforts are important because, even though we can't make everyone listen when we tell the stories of Lewisville, we need to at least make information available. One of the most repeated comments we heard from the public was a desire for more and better communication and for easier lines of public input. To make this happen, we're developing a three-year citywide communication plan that will incorporate results from an overall communications audit and a brand assessment. We are focused on creating a coordinated citywide marketing effort and will develop and implement a detailed marketing plan. The final big move is sustainability. This is a very broad topic with a lot of possible applications, but the Lewisville 2025 Committee tried to narrow the focus so we can move toward being a community that is desirable and thriving for the long term, not just for today. For Lewisville, sustainability means our limited resources, including natural resources, open land, and public finances, are used efficiently to provide a desirable quality of life and a business climate that will serve current and future generations. Combined with the Green Centerpiece, this big move can change the perception of Lewisville by changing how we operate as a city and how we live as a community. The undeniable fact is that many of the resources we depend on—clean water, open land, public dollars—are limited, so we need to use them wisely. Through these nine big moves, the Lewisville 2025 Plan clearly defines a shared vision for a city that will be highly attractive to residents, businesses, and visitors when it turns one hundred years old. The vision that led to the creation of Lewisville in the eighteen forties and its formal incorporation in nineteen twenty-five are still alive today. The roots started way back then are deep and strong. It is only those roots that the Lewisville 2025 Plan will help shape a bright future for the residents of today and the residents of many more tomorrows. When you look into the future of Lewisville...
What do you see?
Jack Welch, long...
I think that stopped it. Thank you, sir.
You've only delayed it.
Now it's stopped.
It's stopped, okay. We do have some of our consultant partners here with us tonight. Wendy Chabaye and Will McDonald from Freezy Nichols are here. Karen is over helping the city of Addison tonight, so Karen Walls was not able to join us. I know she picked Addison over us. So, Council, because of your positive response to 2025 initiatives when we met with you at retreat for those two and a half days, we have started some work on 2025 already. We've had some very positive meetings with UNT related to the Green Centerpiece, so I think that will be bringing a recommendation or proposal to you probably in the next couple of meetings. I think that is looking to be a very, like, a very positive relationship with the University of North Texas. Your budget is going to have a number of items related to the 2025 Plan. Again, it wasn't my intent tonight to talk a lot about those top action priorities and those steps that are in the plan. Remember, this is a long-range plan, and so, over time, I mean, we have to be cognizant of opportunities and changes and be flexible as we move along. That's one reason we are asking that you appoint an oversight committee, some of the members that serve long and hard hours on the 2025 Committees, to make them a standing committee so that, at least perhaps quarterly, we can go to them with new revisions and concepts related to the 2025 Plan, so there'll be a continual sounding board for us. We would like you to consider appointing a committee made up of those folks in September. The Blue Ribbon process is already underway. Many of the projects related to 2025 are capital projects, especially your trail system. And so, you will, we will ask you to appoint a Blue Ribbon Committee in September also. Staff is already developing those capital plan recommendations for you, and we'd want the committee in place by September so they can start reviewing those projects and proposals for a future capital project that might include geo-bonds or certificates of obligation. So, those are some of the next steps. Obviously, if you do adopt the plan tonight, we will turn around and develop a more complete implementation plan that we'll be coming back to you over time as we take on these individual projects. So with that said, I'm here to respond to questions.
Councilors, anybody get any comments or questions so far?
Process looks good. Hope you're pleased with the implementation steps.
No, sir.
Again, the hard work, I mean, we have to thank the committee. I mean, so many of them are here today, and they did a phenomenal job.
We do thank everybody who participated in this. Appreciate y'all coming out and doing this and not looking to us to get the answer, but giving your own answers and comments and suggestions. Anybody here that was on the committee have anything they'd like to ask or comments? I know it was kind of a short, concise thing, but we didn't want to dwell on it more and more since you've already heard it so many times. Okay. No questions, sir, Congress? Councilman Durham?
If we're ready to move to a document.
Second.
Having motion by Councilman Durham to adopt the Lewisville 2025 Vision Plan as presented, and second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, with that approved, we would like to have a little celebration, just thank all of the hard workers on 2025. And Freezy Nichols has very gallantly decided to fund this for us. So, we're going to have the Kilveirs perform, which will be your last concert on the twenty-ninth. We are planning to have a reception, so all of you that are on the 2025 Committees, you can come out. We'll have snacks for you, and then you can enjoy the Kilveirs.
What's the date?
Be the twenty-ninth of September.
July.
Oh, July. Sorry, September's on my mind. July.
We'll make sure that everybody, we'll make sure that everybody who's on the committee will be notified.
Yes, sir. Yes. I've sent a preliminary letter, but we will send a formal invitation.
Okay. Anything else on that?
That's all.
Okay. Next item is review and discussion of the I-35E Corridor Redevelopment. City Council formed an I-35 Corridor Plan Advisory Committee in May of 2010, and this committee held regular meetings between May of 2010 and December of 2011, reviewed recommendations from Parsons, Bickham Hall, Inc., related to the opportunities for redevelopment of I-35 created by highway expansion. The plan summary and directions were presented to council at the February two thousand twelve retreat, and the committee unanimously recommended to adopt the final plan at their meeting on June twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Introduction, so we'll find that off.
Okay. So, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to briefly recap where we've been in the past three years on the I-35 Plan. As you mentioned when you were reading, the plan was actually, started the process in 2010, so that's when the City Council selected a committee to work with staff and our consultants, Portion Bickham Hall, to develop the I-35 Plan well ahead of the I-35 construction project. And the idea was that we would be ahead of the construction project with a lot of ideas of how we can implement difficulties during construction, after construction, and way into the future before the actual construction started. So now with the highway construction well underway, we are actually using the plan, even though it has not been formally adopted, the guidelines in place are really helping us on an everyday basis. So between 2010 and 2011, the committees held almost monthly meetings, the committee that was appointed by the council. We looked at a lot of criteria, we looked at a lot of various similar projects in the rest of the nation, and how we could best implement or how we could leverage the highway construction and the widening of the highway to help us in Lewisville, as all we all know through the vision planning and just driving through I-35 every day, that's our, that's our, our future in Lewisville. And basically, that is what people see of Lewisville. When they drive I-35, everybody identifies Lewisville with I-35. If you ever get a chance to talk with John Folds, our consultant, he's working with a lot of other cities and the I-35 Corridor, and he tells us that we're way ahead of other cities, and some cities are just not starting our process, which puts them behind, basically several years after construction is done, to do some of the things that this city can actually do through the I-35 planning process. So with that, I'm just going to, I think many of you have already met Tom Hester. He did present to you the preliminary work of the plan in the 2012 retreat, and the plan was actually finished by 2013. One of the reasons that we have not brought it back to you to look at and implement is that we wanted to make sure that the 2025 process was going to be finished because we wanted to make sure that the recommendations of the I-35 Plan and the 2025 process are consistent, that they dovetail with each other, and they actually support the two, the two plans. So it's very interesting that even those plans, those plans were done kind of independently, how the recommendations of the plan are extremely consistent and support, each plan supports the other plan. So with that, I would like to introduce Tom Hester again, and with PB, to go over very concisely, because again, this was a very, very long planning process, and there was so much information that was discussed, and we don't want to, you know, completely go through the entire plan that I think you, we've provided to you, that has many different components, which is the plan itself and a large set of appendices, which includes the marketing plan, the identity plan, which basically deals with the, with the public areas, where the right-of-ways are, and then the design guidelines, that would be also part of, part of the implementation of this plan. So with that, Tom?
Thank you very much, Nika. Familiar faces, good to see everybody. I got to commend you on that, on that vision, that's fantastic, and you're right, Nika, the way that these are going to blend together, it is interesting how the recommendations came out to really support each other. So, I'm going to go through this. I actually would welcome comments, if that's okay. I'll go through, Nika said try to keep down to twenty minutes, there is a lot of stuff here, so I will try to talk fast, but if you have any questions along the way, please just stop and, and pretty interact with any of the panel. We had a range of goals, which is pretty much everything that Nika was saying, we're really trying to identify where the opportunities are along the overall corridor and how can you take advantage of that widening when it occurs. And how can we actually prioritize those to where we can create catalyst areas so when you spend a dollar, you can actually get five dollars rather than spending a dollar and just getting two dollars? So that was the big, big idea. We did have a series of components within the project, which is redevelopment plan, the overall market study. The design standards and guidelines were served as a way to get some of those quality standards that we were looking for that would be needed to attract and increase investment, and it also dovetails in with the overall identity plan. We did look, some of you may remember this example, you know, we were talking in the early stages about, you know, don't be afraid to think big. This is an example in Denver, Colorado. The image to the left is a state highway, and what you're looking at on the right is right through Araria Campus. And you can see where the historical church was able to be maintained, but that state highway ended up being rerouted. So, just because something is out there in the landscape now, don't think that it's going to be there forever. So if you've got a good vision and you've got the right implementation strategies, you can get whatever you want. And so we did look at a range of different corridors around the nation, looked at how they, they solve these issues, looking at breaking down limited connectivity and limited transportation grids and how you can actually increase connectivity, walkability, multimodal access, taking advantage of the transit that came in. Also looking at prioritizing that, how do you actually identify where underutilized areas are and begin to prioritize where those investments would go? So we looked at different examples of how we could do that. And obviously, looking at those catalyst areas, putting together a plan for each of those areas, that looked at the mixed abuses, looked at densities that were market-driven, looked at ways of funding, and how could you actually get the seed money to begin to do that? And the kind of strategic partnerships that it would take from the public and private side. So, the overall goal was to create great places, places that really would attract investment. And so that's what we served to do within the overall corridor plan and identify where those are, and it is really kind of nice how it's dovetailed in with your overall vision. Within the market study, it was interesting, with the history of Lewisville taking on so many different uses, it's interesting to see where the market is. The market is definitely a higher-level market. It's all about service uses. They're looking for medical services, legal services, investment services, management services, there is some need for hospitality as well as retail. But what was really interesting is this really kind of upgrade of the higher-level jobs that Lewisville wanted. That was extremely encouraging. We then looked at how would those actually map through the overall corridor, realizing that the areas up towards the north are more lifestyle-oriented, kind of leveraged from, from Lewisville Lake. And then the area in the middle with the hospital, being able to leverage some of those more research and development and more medical-related, small medical offices could happen. Then going down south, really leveraging on the industrial and distribution that you already have. It's very clean, it's very economically sound, how can we actually broaden that? And then getting back to more of the lifestyle center down at the mall at the end, so you'd actually have two lifestyle anchors, one at the north and one at the south. And so the market was actually supporting that kind of development. We also found a series of issues that had to do with overall connectivity. It seemed that north-south connectivity was very good, a number of challenges going east-west. And these are challenges that are going to have to be addressed in order to actually attract that investment, because you've got some of those east-west legs that are really inhibiting some of the mobility. We identified a number of them at the overall corridor scale. For instance, we looked at one of the issues, which was more crossings around the mall, around Hebron Parkway. Hebron Parkway is the only way to get across in that area unless you want to go to one-twenty-one, and because of the great separation, it makes it a little bit more challenging. So are there ways to actually increase connectivity around there? We also worked with our stakeholder group and created a series of priorities. We came up with a series of vision themes, and they ranked those. And I just want to go through the top five just because these really form the foundation of the overall plan. First one was that these catalyst areas of Main Street, Lake Lewisville, and the mall area should really become these regional gateways. Definitely aligns with your vision that's also come out. That the corridor density should be increased. This is an area of intense transportation... That the corridor density should be increased. This is an area of intense transportation investment. It makes sense that you could actually achieve higher density, higher utilization along here. And the stakeholder group acknowledged that as well. And that the frontage roads, one way of cleaning up some of the, the quality and character issues along the frontage roads is to implement some access management policies in there. And by getting some access management and getting some, some secondary roads that would come off of those, you wouldn't have to have all the curbs cut. You could actually keep the same kind of development. You could actually intensify the development by creating more connectivity from those frontage roads, by getting other roads that would link in there. And that the infrastructure improvements should be integrated and linked with economic development and some of the other improvements.
Can I just add, and just, just as a reference point, the stakeholders group and the people who were on the committee were a very diverse group. So what council appointed, that's appointed, were a very diverse group that looked at a lot of different issues. So not only we had residents and board members on the committee, but we also, of course, had the chairman of the CTA was on the committee. We had Commissioner Mitchell, County Commissioner, that was on the committee. We also had outside developers, developers that would be making investment in Lewisville and wanted to see how they can really leverage these improvements and the investment that they're going to be making in Lewisville. So we had some large development companies that were represented on the committee. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, we really were trying to use a market base rather than come up with something that was just pie in the sky. What, what could we actually do within a reasonable period of time? We looked at the overall land uses along the corridor and recognized that there were some lower, lower utilized uses. We had some commercial that was not high, high-end, a lot of auto and boat sales, as well as some vacant land and some residential. All of these were going to be impacted with the widening. We also realized that based on the access management principles that were happening along the corridor, that it was resulting in some strict development. Had to do with parcel size, parcel orientation, existing development regulations, and the way that the connectivity and access was working. And by reforming that, keeping your overall land area, you could actually create some nodes, you could create places. And we had identified, similar with, with the vision, about three or four real focus areas along the corridor that could really be increasing density through a change of the overall base infrastructure. Use the infrastructure, expand it, you can actually create the opportunity for higher density, quality focus points. And that was one of the big findings that we found through here. Also, taking advantage of the overall beauty that you get within that eight mile stretch along I-35. You get some topography, you get some undulation, you get some range of views going through different character areas. How could you take advantage of that with the development as long as with the undulation of the revised freeway? We also looked at corridor character to give an underpinning foundation for the identity plan. And by working with the stakeholder group, they identified that water was one of the main marketing themes that you had for, for Lewisville. That people would think of Lewisville and think of the overall lake. So the idea of thinking about the, the greens centerpiece is fantastic, is a way to leverage that. And really thinking about the I-35 corridor as an economic development corridor that could then feed all of that. So within the water theme, we also looked at three sub areas. We looked at the, the sub theme in the north of being water related to the lake. The area in the center, more urban, related to Old Town and the medical center and medical uses. And then down towards the south, more park, kind of picking up in Timber Creek and some of the trailways in that area. We also came up with a series of land use typologies. This could be used together with the, with the design standards and guidelines, just to give some, some overall guidance and, and overall characteristics. For a range of different typologies, we looked at some characteristics in terms of density, in terms of site coverage, in terms of access. And then a series of recommendations that could be used to influence other development regulations once this is adopted. We did this for entertainment retail. We also did it for residential mixed use and commercial mixed use and for office. We also looked at the overall street character, realizing that your overall right of way is divided up into three main areas. You've got a travel way where you've got your, your, your actual car travel. You also have the pedestrian area and those can be developed in many different ways. And then your development zone. And the relationship of all of these really kind of forms that overall street space, creates that, that area of investment. So we looked at a series of cross sections for arterials and for local streets. This is an example of a local street showing how you could have some off-street parking, two lanes of travel in each direction, and then a pedestrian buffer area that could actually go towards some of the sustainability principles that came out of the vision. And then a pedestrian zone. And that would all be regulated all through your, your, your development codes and so forth and, and integrated with the overall character. We also looked at what a longitudinal section could look like. This is, I think, what gave some of the, the opportunity for the identity plan, realizing that the, the, the side of the highway would actually be one of your main calling cars coming in. And then looking at the development that could happen. And this is looking at Hebron Parkway and how in the future, you could theoretically have more density around some of those nodes. And then the, the massing would then tier back from there. But also you'd have upgraded character in terms of the, the, the long part of the, of the highway section as well as the cross section going over. We broke up the corridor into about seven different sub areas and it was just based on about a mile long lengths. Just going to go over a couple of them quickly. If you have any questions, please just stop me. At the, at the north end, there was going to be some impacts to some of the homes. So on the west side, we looked at improving some of the landscaping. So coming down from the south, you'd be able to get that gateway character that was just talked about on, on the vision plan. So this would be a way to implement that. Also getting some connections over to the, to the transit area and to the lake. And then also having some opportunity for some commercial there. So these are some short terms opportunities that could happen after the taking. We then looked at sub area two. Sub area two is a very large area with a lot of vacant land. Has a lot of opportunity, especially linking with the lake. We looked at some of the existing roads, the infrastructure that was there and some of the, the disconnections that, that could be improved. Based on that, we put together an open space and mobility framework that could show a logical expansion of some of the existing streets as well as connected open spaces that could help with some of those multimodal connections. Based on that, we put together some land use ideas where we would be focusing some of the mixed use commercial around Justin coming in off of, within the, the center of that. And it would also go up to a very interesting piece where we had a pedestrian bridge that could connect with some higher density housing and connecting with the transit station. So that this whole area could be leveraged for new development connecting with transit, even though it's on the west side. This is actually quite viable. And we put together some urban forum guidelines in terms of primary facades and, and local gateways and improved intersections to kind of help guide some of that. And an illustrative plan of what that could look like from a commercial point of view, as well as from an open space connectivity. So we've got some different green parks that we're showing both north and south of Justin. That could serve as sustainability as well as open space connectivity. And what's most exciting about this is what, what could this really yield? So at the end of the day, at about 300 acres, we could get about 2.4 million square feet of office, leveraging around 350 square feet of neighborhood services and about 2,500 units to give a revenue of around $2 million. So within that sub area, that, that's pretty good. Jumping down to sub area five, a little bit south, another big opportunity area.
Sure. I just wanted to say for every sub area though, we have, we're not going to go over every sub area in this presentation, but every sub area has an analysis, every sub area has short-term strategies and long-term strategies. So for, we have done that for every sub area, but we concentrated only on the, basically, three major focal point areas.
Looking at the overall land use in, in sub area five, which is interesting, you see the residential coming right up to the highway. And we also have some of the existing commercial nodes and some of the, the light industrial nodes happening off there. Again, we looked at the overall issues with mobility and with transportation. Here, we've got Mill Street coming into 121. We've got all those kind of transportation issues getting onto I-35 as well as on the west and on the east side. So we were looking at how can we actually put some ideas in there to improve that? So we looked at, could we actually realign Mill Street, kind of come in, take off the, the burden that is so close to the highway and actually then create an opportunity for more economic development? By bringing Mill over to 121, you then free up that stacking area. You actually create an area that could be developed over time at a higher utilization. We also looked at bringing in a secondary road with, on the west side, maybe putting a focal park to actually create a center there. And with more access, you wouldn't have the, the single loaded parcels. You'd actually be able to get double loaded parcels within that area. So we put together the associated land uses that could make sense there, having some commercial, having some office that's shown in purple. That could be that real office gateway location off of 121. And then also in some entertainment retail that could come off of Mill, continuing the idea from downtown through Mill, coming into that node at 121 and then continuing on into a redevelopment zone. Similar, we put together some different quality standards for primary and secondary facades so that it'd be clear what kind of streets we're thinking out. And we put together one option for what that could potentially look like. Again, showing some higher use retail on the west side with the park, showing some office gateway areas. And in this area, showing some residential, but it could also be light industrial, something which could also link with an open space along the transit line and create that, that trail character. Again, put together a visualization of what that could be. And similarly, these numbers are averaged out, but the, the increased, the overall tax revenues that could be generated from a plan like this could also yield around $2 million, even though it's a different makeup. Then jumping down to sub area seven, down by the mall. It's primarily, it's a ring road mall. It's got a lot of commercial uses in there. It's got some new uses happening at Hebron, the, the transit, the stations, development that Mr. Huff finds has done. Very high quality housing is really a, a great accent to the city. We looked at some of the, the existing infrastructure in terms of open space. We noticed that some of the open space areas were, were cut. They didn't continue. And when you look at a diagram like this, you kind of wonder, wow, are there ways to increase mobility and open space connectivity? And we know that we have large piece of infrastructure like freeways, but are there other ways to, to handle that? And around the country, there's lots of case studies for how, how to do that. But we, what we also realized was that there was a big hang point at, at Hebron Parkway in terms of crossing. If you were going to increase the density around here and increase the utilization, how would you do it, realizing that Hebron Parkway was the main crossing? So in looking at mobility strategy, we're looking at maybe breaking down, keeping the, the valuable assets within the mall area that makes sense. But over time, as different parts of the mall may become less valuable, it may be a great partnership to work with the mall to revitalize some of those areas, again, keeping what works. And breaking down the ring road and adding a few other connected streets and even thinking about another connection, maybe just a roadway connection, not necessarily an interchange, across the highway. And, and still keeping some of the green space buffers along there. Really emphasizing Timber Creek and then the, the development that could happen along there.
One thing I had a question on is, is the mall currently, is it, in today's standards, is it over parked?
Well, I think from a code basis there, you know, they need code from a proprietary basis. They probably give you an answer from A to Z, but I would say that just looking at it from, from time to, the majority of the time, it's not full. Obviously, the parking lot's not 100% full holidays. They may beg to differ, but there's excess parking there most of the time.
But right now, it meets the current code?
Yes.
Code had been changed since they've done it. They would give them less requirement for the parking for it.
And I think since they saw, as you know, some of the anchors on their own parcels. So if you look at it based on parcels, some parcels may be a little over, some parcels may not be. But the mall itself has certain parking for the mall, and of course, each parcel's around it, they have their own, their own parking. So the ratio is normally five for a thousand square feet and they're tied about that, five by that.
Mayor, I might point out, Leanne Lowry is here and she was a member of the I-35 committee. She's sitting on the back row.
What do you want to know?
Do you think we have extra parking in general?
We have 6,500 spaces.
Okay.
You tell us. We have what you say we have to know.
Could you deal with less?
Depends on what happens.
Yeah. Well, the interesting thing too is that's really linked with financing. So if you're going after financing for some of the different improvements, then depending on the lender, they're going to be looking for different parking ratios regardless of what the city standards are. So all that has to be balanced.
But to Nika's point, we don't own the whole parking lot. You know, each of the department stores own their own parcels.
Right. Has there ever been a shared parking management agreement?
Everyone wants to share the mall parking at one point or another, it seems like.
Yeah. There's, there's some cities that actually have formal agreements about shared parking and that they kind of structure them with all the different major landowners. I don't know if that's been considered just something to think about for implementation because sometimes cities have been able to leverage the existing parking in better ways. And it's actually, it's a step before doing shared parking. You know, in terms of the formal shared parking with different uses and so forth. Throwing it out there. There's lots of different tools to think about. So we came up with overall land uses and this was really based on keeping that commercial entertainment core, but then trying to get some other commercial cores off the, the sides of it and getting a, a mix of density of residential. It also goes to one of your themes in your vision about a, a choice of housing, a greater, greater range of housing choices. This, this could be an area where that could happen. Similarly, we came up with an idea of the Main Street that could work within that mall area. Again, as, as the market kind of allows. And this is a, an illustration of actually keeping some of those more valuable anchor assets, but still kind of weaving through possibly a Main Street theme, trying to get maybe a bridge going over to increase connectivity. And that could really also empower the area along Timber Creek and also linking to the Hebron 121 community. Really wanted to emphasize the idea of how transportation can really leverage and, and the, the infrastructure improvements can actually leverage that, that private investment opportunity. By increasing the, the connectivity, you'll be able to allow that. Otherwise, you're going to be limited, not by anything more than limited access because developers are really looking for how much throughput can I get here in order to increase densities? So even though you may allow, lots of cities I work with, they'll say, oh, well, we'll give the developers whatever they want. Developers say, well, that's not the issue. The issue is how many cars can I actually get? Even though you're going to get me 40 stories, you know, I, I can't build it. The market won't, won't take it and your streets won't take it. So it's, it's that's the whole kind of relationship that has to be, you got to find a balance on.
How realistic is it for us to put a bridge over 35?
That's going to be a partnership, obviously. I think working with, and the great thing about it is, have you talked with Tech Start at all about that idea? Because the time to do it, obviously, is at the time of the widening, where you're going to get definitely a benefit. But there's other funding things that we can bring in.
Right. This phase was so, so far along, the first phase, by the time we started on this process, that, that it was not possible to, to contemplate an additional crossing on I-35 with the first phase. It could be very possible with the second phase, but we really need to start discussions very early on. They were able to get one for the Nebraska furniture store across from 121, so. So it is possible. It's just, it takes a lot of discussion, negotiations, and of course, money.
2025 plan also envisioned a crossing and the crossing they envisioned was at College Street, a pedestrian crossing. And we talked a little bit with John about that opportunity and he said, yes, it's possible. And it has a price tag of about $4 million. So, but that's pedestrian elements.
Pedestrian is a lot easier to implement than vehicular.
Interesting, when we kind of do the fiscal summary, you kind of see what kind of leverage you can get from the overall corridor. This is one of those main gateways. So what would be interesting to, to look at is if you look at the, the, what, what this area is netting now and what the potential could be with increased accessibility, what could that give? And that's going to really be a good answer to your question because you'd be able to take a portion of that, that additional net margin and, and work with the other private people around that would be benefiting as well because they're going to be able to get higher price tags for their land and for the development. And this is that sheet. So on page 100, we have the overall analysis. What's interesting is if you look at the property values that we projected based on the short-term and long-term improvements that could happen within each of the different sub areas, it comes down to be about $1.2 billion. And I think we were looking at, right now, the property value along the corridor is around $24 million.
I divided 25, 24, 24.8. That's, we had done an analysis, you know, about four years ago about what's, what, what do we have along the corridor right now? And what have we been losing in terms of tax base and what do we need to be generally back? And right now, the corridor has about $25 million left. Just the swamp is going to be impacted by the road, not, 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 not that.
What we'd be looking at is trying to make improvements that would give you a leverage of about a factor of five, which would be very good. And that would be integrating everything, integrating the transportation along with your, your development policies and, and the character improvements, really trying to attract some private investment. So the overall quarter could get to about $14 million in revenue.
Before you move on, because you're going to another part here. When you're talking about building a bridge over that and you said something about a pedestrian bridge only. Would it not be a, would it not be more beneficial, instead of trying to build a, you could build a pedestrian, but also have a, some type of a trolley system that goes across there? That wouldn't be, it wouldn't be open to the public cars, but it would transport. People could park on either side of the freeway and then they could catch a trolley or whatever over to the other side, which would give total access for shopping, restaurants, and everything else.
I believe the I-35 plan does actually talk about that in the southern section. I believe the I-35 Plan does actually talk about that in the southern section related to the mall. So you have the trolley system that runs through the mall, it runs over to the DCTA's train stop along the mixed-use development. And so, yes.
But that was a, if I remember reading it, that was just a trolley system to do it with the existing thoroughfares that we have?
It actually envisioned.
Did it have a vision of a new one? Okay, I didn't see it.
We were using it to actually start the culture of expanding the transit. So if you did get a trolley going along Hebron, everyone's going to give you more ability, more access through the trolley. But that's exactly right. It'd be fantastic to then make the crossing. And if you could make a crossing somewhere that made logical sense, it could be engineered, then you could actually connect with Hebron or connect with another facility to get to the transit station. But most definitely, however we can increase that, and if there's other ways, we also look at the possibility of making a green space connection through a pedestrian bridge here, whether or not this made sense. So that pedestrians could actually come from the transit station, come through an open space corridor through the Huff Mines Development, which is being very beautiful, across Timber Creek. And if there's a pedestrian bridge, pedestrian bridges at this location would be very difficult because of the overall width. So it would have to be very special. But if there's a way to kind of get pedestrians over there and then get cars over as well, then you'd be doubling your capacity along that, which would really influence the opportunity for that SubArea 7.
As that area on the west side of the freeway has a lot of employment centers, basically, within basically one mile, we have five large employers. And then on the other side, we have the transit station. We have been, every time we have a large employer come in, we talk with DCTA about connection and how can they run some kind of a, some kind of a system, bus system, to connect, connect the two points. Actually, right now, they are, have started, don't want to put out the spot, but the DCTA has started running some buses through Waters Ridge, basically, from the transit station through Waters Ridge. So they connect all of our employer center on that side to the transit station. So it's very possible.
Any other questions on the? So on the heels of the overall corridor ideas within the I-35 Plan, we looked at, going a little bit more depth in terms of the identity plan along there, how could we actually improve this as part of the overall marketing and branding of the city? So we looked at the area, and we realized that some of the recent rejigging of the highway overpasses and underpasses is different. But more or less, there's a series of overpasses and underpasses that would happen throughout three different areas, which would be the overall parks, the Old Town, the lakes, which are similar to the themes that were created in the corridor plan. And for each of the different character areas, a series of themes were created and worked through with the stakeholder group to kind of look at what was going to be appropriate for branding along the highway. And then we created a series of illustrations for the main underpasses and overpasses. And this was one that we looked at for Hebron Parkway. Again, bringing in some of those green park elements within this area. And we went down even planning concepts about what would that actually look like? We identified species, location, spacing along those different areas. And this looked at corporate, as it was envisioned before. Again, the idea is, whether it's above grade or below grade, really, how do you provide a crossing that's going to be attractive? Because there's lots of times where crossings will be provided, but they won't be very inviting, and we can all have ideas of that. So it's about how much can you work with Tech Start during this time to pay just a small increment to integrate that in the design rather than doing it later? Because when you do it later, it's going to cost a lot more, and that's where it's more difficult for cities to do that. So however you can integrate those improvements at the time, you're going to obviously get much further leverage of the public dollars. And within the Old Town area, looking at some of those improvements at 121, this would be looking at what would happen at the, at grade, yep. And where there'd be a separation from the higher-speed traffic to the Texas turnaround, and then how the pedestrian area could be improved. Again, using signage, using lighting, using landscaping.
Actually, with the highway plans, it's kind of gotten a little better because we only have now, we will have ultimately only two underpasses. Everything else is going to be a bridge. And a bridge is a lot more inviting to cross, especially if you have enough, enough distance between the travel lanes and the, so you're not under a dark underpass. So it's, so we can really look at our bridges and how to get connected to start as the highway by providing really, really good pedestrian connections that would be easy to cross between the two sides.
And the big issue there is going to be paying attention and working with Tech Stop for how they're going to be treating the underside of that in terms of color, texture, material, paint, all of that stuff. Making sure that it is very inviting. We also, again, we looked at all the different character areas that could be improved. And then in the lake area, we came up with a slightly different color theme, so from the parks to the urban area, came up with more of a blue theme that would go with the water theme, and came up also with patterns that would be more reminiscent of that lake and water theme. So bringing all those together, we also came up with some preliminary implementation strategies that really dealt with how to prioritize some of these projects so that you could leverage some of the public dollars. Looked at responsible parties to begin this and some of the partnerships that could be formed. We looked at timeframes in terms of phasing, as well as some of the funding. In terms of phasing, it was interesting, when we talked with developers, it wasn't really about a five, 10, or 15-year plan. It was really about before, during, and after. Because when they were working on their business plans, they knew that they could only do so much before the construction. And then during the construction, they were going to be limited in their business plans of what they could do, what they were really interested in, what was going to happen after, and when this is going to be done. And then the more of the planning is going to happen from the private sector when you're about a year out from finishing. That's when they're going to be coming back and really looking at some of the, what can be done? What are the real opportunities? Because by that time, they can actually see, see what's going to happen. So even though you've got a vision out now, and you may think, well, we're not getting enough interest from the private sector, talk to them. Because what you're, they're going to probably say something very similar to that. They're going to say, once Tech Start is almost done, once we can kind of see that this is, that this is almost done, we want to talk to you about this, this, and this. In terms of managing and leveraging impacts, we did, as Nika was saying, we did an analysis of every parcel along this eight-mile stretch. And we identified any kind of disturbance, whether it be a building impact, parking impact, landscape, access, or whether it was vacant land. And we have a series of different images that look like this. This one, again, shows dark brown where there was a building taking, the yellow, which was parking, green, which was an access management issue, or blue, which was a landscape issue. We identified that, and then for every parcel, we identified it, came up with a mitigation strategy that the city could use to work with that landowner for addressing those impacts. We also put together some parcel impact guidance, and this is, this could be a very strong tool once the plan is adopted, and if this was actually given a lot more teeth. What we're doing here is saying that there's a minor impact, a major impact, and a full acquisition. And within a minor impact, if it met that kind of criteria, it could be addressed through a mitigation letter. Because that could just be granting some kind of variance or helping someone out with parking or some kind of landscaping or setback. If it's minor, that makes sense. If it's a major impact, it probably needs to go through council, and it's going to be a bigger issue. And then, of course, with the full acquisition, it would go to a broader redevelopment strategy for that area. But this really needs some focus moving forward. Also, in terms of business retention and relocation, you have a lot of opportunities that the city kind of worked through the overall corridor plan, identifying where vacant areas are, and looking at where could you actually put some businesses that are going to be put off because of the Tech Start improvements. So there's a lot of area within that SubArea 2 that we had identified, a lot of areas at the north. If an infrastructure plan was put together for that early, it could actually accept some of those relocations much easier. What would be difficult is, if Tech Start, you know, decides when they're going to do that, if you don't have an area ready for those businesses to go, those businesses may need to go in some other development-ready area. So if this part of SubArea 2 were, again, if the streets were planted, if you already had a plan to go, and if you had some kind of funding structure to work with development partners, to where it could be a public-private partnership to get some of this done, then that would be creating a really good incentive. There are some cities that actually have either done horizontal planning, they've actually done some spec planning, or worked with a developer to do some spec planning, anticipating some of the businesses that are going to be put out. And if you actually have a place ready for them to go, and if you work with them and understand what their needs are, then you could actually continue to benefit from that.
So this is, these two slides, this one and the next slide is what we created at staff level, because we wanted to, we were meeting with Tech Start on quarterly basis and the stakeholders that are impacted along the corridor, and a question comes up, where can they move to? And so if you look at these two slides, the green shows the vacant land along the corridor, and there is very little of it left. So primarily, the major area of vacant land that they could actually go in and develop, let's say, are restaurant sites. If they're going somewhere and they absolutely have to be on the I-35 corridor, this is pretty much it, the, you know, the little green areas that we show, and much of it is a little off the highway on the southern end. The northern end is just that 407 summit, that area. And it becomes very critical how that area is developed. It's, again, the remaining largest vacant portion that we have, and the gateway to the city. And if we let it just primarily develop haphazardly, it's going to pretty much develop with some marginal uses in the long run, not implement the plan. So that's, that's an area we really, really need to concentrate on.
So supporting this overall plan, we did do the overall design guidelines, which look at site planning criteria to kind of help better site planning guides. Architecture, we looked at building materials, we looked at landscaping and lighting, we looked at signage, public art, street furniture. So all of those criteria are at least identified within this to give a head start for some policy reform in terms of development regulations. In terms of incentives, this is obviously a target area coming from this plan as well as from your vision plan. You've got a range of different incentives available. Some are financial, some are timing, some are partnership-based. So you've got a range of different tools to work with there. And of course, this should be oriented towards those areas that are going to be, going towards your vision, businesses that can empower your vision. So that's where you should be focusing some of those, which would be expanding employment, expanding the housing choices, all the different nine themes that actually came out of the vision were just fantastic. So next steps would be about adopting and celebrating the plan. And part of celebrating it is actually beginning some of the implementation of some of the policy amendments that would implement the plan. Coming up with the idea about a corridor overlay district, it sounds simple. It's not, oh, just make a corridor overlay. But that actually entails an awful lot, and needs to be linked with a lot, needs to be linked with independent development policies. It could also be linked with some of the financing. So we talked about some of the incentives. We also mentioned the idea of creating a corridor infrastructure fund. And that could be attached to the corridor overlay, but you need to cede that something. And you could either cede it through general funding, or it could also be done through some strategic private-public partnerships, if you had clear projects that were identified where the broader private sector could benefit. So some of those can be done through development agreements, some particular development, but you can also attract some, also through corporate sponsorships, some funding for corporate infrastructure fund. Identifying, through that process, identifying where you can get some of those catalytic projects that would actually leverage two or three other private projects. So rather than just doing a project that's going to enable one area, do something that's going to enable about four projects or five projects, again, getting that five-to-one leverage. And so there's a range of different funding strategies that we had in there, including a PID, a tax redevelopment zone, as well as some of the partnerships. And if there's any opportunity for doing any land banking through any of the remnant parcels, we realize that that's a bit touchy and difficult working with the private sector with Tech Stop. But if there are opportunities to kind of hold out and assemble some of those larger areas, especially the ones that are more strategic for the gateway locations, gateway centers, that would be a great opportunity. And so that's where we are. I know it's a lot. It represents two or three years of having fun.
What would be an example of a private sector who would be willing to do a public-private partnership for that type of incentive?
What kind of project would you be considering?
Well, you were talking about offering incentives along the corridor for that type of development, right? For the overlay district?
So what we'd be looking at is, how can, since the private sector can only take on so much, and if there, a lot of, in the SubArea plans that we created, that there are infrastructure improvements needed in terms of street pattern, connectivity, mobility. That's what we're talking about. The city probably can't take all of that on by itself, and why would the city do it unless you had a private sector partner that wanted to do something much more valuable on his or her side?
So the private sector partner would be the actual developer that's looking to come in?
In many cases, yeah. Yeah. Unless you can get corporate sponsors for some specific identity elements. There are examples, you know, we're talking about pedestrian bridges. There are examples out there in the U.S. where corporations have actually sponsored pedestrian bridges.
I guess that, yeah, that was my original question. Because obviously, the developer is going to have to be a partner in it regardless. So the corporate sponsor was kind of my question as far as, I guess I was having a hard time thinking of what type of a corporate sponsor might benefit from that type of sponsorship. Toyota of Lewisville Pedestrian Bridge, no?
True.
There's a range of different insurance companies. Yeah. It's not uncommon. And if you can get a corporate sponsor and a private developer who actually wants to do something more, and if they bring forth a plan, you can see that you're already going to be getting three times the amount of eventual revenue, and you kind of work with them to kind of figure out what are their sticking points. Because a lot of times, there's a financial need to kind of help fill the gap, but many times, it's other things. It's other kind of partnerships that are needed to get a development off. So it really depends on the particular business plan of that opportunity. I know it sounds vague, but money doesn't solve everything. It helps. Maybe I should say, it takes more than money. It takes more than money.
Mayor and Council, this is an extremely complicated plan. You noticed that I did not ask you to adopt this plan tonight. It has short-term opportunities, and it has long-term opportunities. The one thing you have to keep in mind is, this project is underway, and we cannot miss opportunities that could change the face of this. And I think that is what we're facing. And so we want to, we want to move and take some of this, a bite at a time. So at our next meeting, Mr. Petty is here with us tonight. He's going to be here, and we're going to talk about the northern part. If you remember, in the 2025 Plan, we talked about three focal identity areas, the northern around the lake, the middle area that's around 121 Business, and the southern area around the mall area. And so we want to focus first, so you can get a feel for how the plan would operate in relation to that northern segment. So at your next workshop, your next meeting, we will come back and focus on that and talk through opportunities that we have there, things that we need to get in place to prevent certain things from happening. Nika mentioned, that's an area where we have so much vacant land, one of the only areas, and there is probably a need to protect that land so that it's going to develop in the way we want it to develop. So again, I didn't ask you to adopt it. I think this is a lot for you to review in one meeting. So I want to take it a step at a time and come back with the northern section. At a later time, there are certain other opportunities that we need to look at. This whole overlay district needs to be considered, what it takes to do that. So again, we're going to come back to you with different recommendations to move this project forward. In the end, we are going to ask that you adopt it, but I certainly want to make sure that you have an overall understanding of what the requirements are. Because some of the requirements are going to require taking a pretty strong stance about what's going to be allowed to develop and what's not going to be allowed to develop. So we need to work with you on that, and what that means as far as how our codes are written, and how other regulations are developed, so.
Bringing utilities underground. Let's stay within the corridor right now and work at that deal, because it gets, I don't think it's too big to go much further outside of that. And even if we just did, when a line is being moved for roadway on 35, and most of that would be in Phase 2, I believe, on 35, I guess that could, how can we get that started, either with incentives or city involvement, overlay district? I don't have that, you could possibly get together with a bunch of different property owners and have them work on it. But at least right now, start with the deal where it's, where the lines are being moved anyway. So there's a change occurring. And what do you think about that? What could be done to fund that?
Should we move the lines early?
No, no, the line- No, no, the lines are being moved, they're above ground now.
Right.
And they're being, because I'm assuming if they're underground now and have to be moved, they're going to go back underground. Is that right? I think that's the word.
Yeah.
The ones that are above ground now, and we'd like to see some of those go, or most of it go underground.
Right.
How could you work that into an incentive package or, I don't know, TIFs or whatever else you could work into?
So it's primarily power, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be all utilities that are above ground now.
Yeah. So it's, either you're, so that's going to be a utility strategy?
Yes.
And obviously without, there's a lot of utilities out there. So you can pay for that, that is a public improvement. So you can pay through innovative public financing, which could be through TIF or something else. It's best to do it when you actually know what's going to be happening because then you can coordinate that altogether and you can also help consolidate. And the utility issue also does a lot with what you're anticipating along the character of that right of way. For instance, we didn't get into some of the detail, but we identified areas to kind of enforce that nodal idea. We had areas where the, where the architecture and the buildings would come up closer to the highway. And we had areas where the building footprints would recede. So you could actually take other uses that are very viable and needed within the neighborhood, but they may not be as iconic. So you just kind of set them back a little bit and you can have screening techniques. So those are also really good corridors for infrastructure. So all of this needs to be put together. So when you actually know what you want the corridor character to look like, you can then coordinate that with the utility master plan and then you can then associate it with funding. And then you can get different funding streams depending on what you're, where you're going and what you're trying to consolidate. But make sure that you do it knowing what your end path is with your, with your overall character.
I think right now, a lot of this is property that already exists, the improvements are already there. And, but the lines are being moved, say they're moving the property back 25 feet.
Right.
And they're going to have to move the utilities anyway.
Right.
The electric, cable, telephone, so on and so on.
So.
And do something with that while it's under construction.
Right.
And there's already money to be moving it. So we would just be looking at the additional cost above what it would be to keep it above ground to add on to the cost it would be to take it underground.
Yes, but depending on what the conditions are, that can be a big gap.
Yes, it can be huge.
Yeah.
And that's the whole issue, it's a huge gap. And then some of the, some of the lines, depending on the size of them, the utility company simply refuses to put some of those.
Yes, now there are limitations, I understand that.
But I think at this point, because what you said, Rudy, that a lot of these are existing properties. So our ordinance, which says anything new would go underground, is not going to apply.
Yes.
So primarily it becomes.
That's why there has to be a participation on the part of a city, a third party or something. Or an incentive package to have the property owner agree to it for something else.
Yeah, it becomes all part of that bottom line, since the regulation, of course.
I just look at it, we're looking at all of the improvements, all the visual things we're putting, we're going to try to put up the branding of different things in different parts of the city. And then you've got, you know, a 12-line power pole there every 100 feet.
Yeah, that obviously has to be addressed.
Yeah.
You're right.
That's, I just wanted to see if we can get that into this somewhere.
We'll research that.
If we had a lot of money, if you okay, just do it. Didn't work that one. If anybody saw the stuff on Rio de Janeiro on 60 Minutes last night, I don't know if you did. They showed the lines there, it looks like snakes everywhere. And that's a true nightmare of how it can get because they let people run their own lines.
We're not going to do that.
It didn't look anything that bad. It's something we need to think about because once it's moved, then you've got additional cost if you're going to take that underground.
At a minimum, it has to be, you're right, that has to happen. And I'm also thinking about overall priorities. And when you actually, I work with another working group to kind of dive in a little bit more and look at what the priorities are going to be for each of the different sub areas. I think it'll be a little bit easier to kind of answer your question, you know, for the specific opportunity.
It's coming up fairly quickly, assuming the money keeps flowing for highways. That, we're looking at that phase two coming up fairly quickly on 35E. That's all.
Other council members got questions? I got two real quick, yes, real quick, we could, but you said this. One, I know you said you did need us to adopt this, but I guess my only concern is, do we need to give you any direction or any authority to deal with things that are coming up in other parts since we're starting to go north? And I'm thinking more around the 121 southern area there, or that middle area there that where there's some stuff being, happening there. I know you've had people coming in wanting to do certain things. Is there anything we need to do to give you to the ability to not allow certain uses of things?
At minimum, Tom showed that chart that shows the percentage of impact and the action the city would take based on that type of impact. We would want to bring that back to you fairly quickly to be adopted.
Okay.
So that'll be one of the first things we do.
Okay.
Your absolute right there.
Then the other thing I had was, and I mentioned a little bit at retreat, when we were talking about the 2025 plan and we talked about this, um, too, on Main Street there. I'm thinking that's kind of our urban corridor, I guess, the Main Street area, get to 121. Have we, would we want to give any thought towards referencing the Farmer Pride somewhere through there? When you look at it, probably over half of your citizenry has either gone to that school or will have children go to that school since it is the only high school in the city. And while the other high schools are, there's three high schools, but they're all Louisville High School. And they're all, there's a Harmon, Louisville High School Harmon Campus, Louisville High School Main Campus, and Louisville High School Kilo Campus. They're all three of those five. Do we want to do anything to kind of reference that there to that area, to tie that in? I think Mr. Ferris said at retreat and some other people said, when you go anywhere, people are like, oh, yeah, Louisville, yeah, Home and Farming Farmers, yeah, y'all got that big tower there? I mean, it's recognizable. I hear it a lot. So I don't know if that's something I would go and look at doing.
We had that at one time, it wasn't necessarily a high school mascot, but it was more of an agricultural.
Right, it does, right, right. And it doesn't have to be the mascot, maybe just something to reference, Home and Farmer Pride or something like that. Something, but you don't have to do mascot.
Certainly can be considered, Mayor, it's not really envisioned here. But we do have the branding initiative too that's recommended to you in your budget. And so that might be something you want to consider as part of that program.
But, and if we were going to do something, I think would be, now would be the one time to do it. When they start doing that bridge, we need to act on that pretty quick too. Because, and if you don't want to do it, that's fine, but I think you're going to have half your citizenry here all the time. It's going to be either graduates are there or they got kids going there, one of the two.
I think that's a good point because that bridge is actually in the second phase, so that would give us some time to really think about it.
Right.
It's both good and bad that Main Street Bridge is not being done in the first phase. It would have been really nice if we could redo that whole bridge in the first phase, but it's in the second phase. So that gives us time to really think about it.
Okay. And I don't know the concept I would use it, but just somehow to reference it.
Some of those things were used in the, in the parks area.
Right.
And some of the icons and those discussions in terms of trying to preserve that and celebrate that were definitely had.
And we can, we can certainly look at that when we develop the identity plan along the highway. So on the banks of the highway, basically. Right now, what we've looked at is the train identity and the old town identity. That could be mixed in with that.
Right.
With that piece of it. So as you're coming in through that section of town, that could become the identity for that area.
Because I don't know that there's any plans in the school district to build another quote, high school in the city limits of Louisville.
And property.
Close to build out right there.
You have to replace it, existing building.
No, I mean, another, have an additional, fly them out as Marcus and fly them out. I don't think they're going to build additional, I think these three campuses are going to encompass the district.
I think when you bring the recommendations in our further meetings, are we starting? It seems like to me the construction is coming from the south, headed north. So, go ahead.
It's just that, it's, there's, for instance, there's some points that are just actually taking, taking place not systematically. For instance, the 407 bridge. Right now, that's, that bridge is going to come down and that's going to become the really main focus.
Is that why?
That's, that's why, they're going to rebuild that very, very early.
So that's where we'll be starting at in our, when we look at the project?
Pretty much.
Pretty much in the north and, okay.
Yes, mainly for tourist, it's, one is that that bridge is going to be done as one of the first pieces of the highway.
All right.
Two, we have most of our major land ironically right there at that bridge. So it creates two very strong forces for, for development.
Okay.
And developers know that. They know that's the first piece that's going to go in, vacant land, best place to start doing something. So that's the area we really need to focus first. The southern, everything is coming along kind of systematically, but they are focusing in different areas at different times. For instance, I think that the bridge, the bridge over the lake is going to be one area that they're going to focus the next, after our 407 bridge, so.
Okay.
But if you drive at night, I'm sure you've noticed everything's in a mess, so. So all of us is impacted.
Well, I was just trying to understand why we were starting where we were.
Right, that and of course, that bridge, or it's not a bridge, it's an underpass, actually that's one of our two underpasses, 407 is going to go. Freeway is going to be on top of it. Is actually going to be what we call the ultimate condition. So this is going to, it's going to give you a really good idea of how wide the highway is going to be in the future with the second phase because this is the piece that they're going to do to the ultimate condition. It's complete, the complete or redo of that whole area and it won't be touched the next time it comes back for a second phase. So which, which again, for our purpose, if that gives you the identity that we're trying to create and show really, you know, what, what our money is being spent on and how is it going to separate that character of Louisville from other, other cities, then we're going to see, we're going to see the result of basically the infrastructure money that you have spent.
I will tell you that Nika is receiving numerous phone calls from the restaurants that are being, are going to have to relocate and various businesses. So we are already being impacted by what's going on on I-35. So the mayor's right that we need to get some of these elements back to you and get some teeth put in them as quickly as possible. So we are working on it.
At what point do the codes and ordinances or whatever is going to apply to this, but when will that be?
Now. Now. Everything's now, yesterday.
Yeah, and actually, and that's.
So we'll be looking at that roughly around the same time.
Except that we need to look at, as Donna said, we need to look at this, it's such a large plant for such a large area that we need to look at it piece by piece and which ones are more critical. So the first critical piece is that parcel impact analysis for the ones that are impacted today, right now. And then we need to look at the more longer term vision, which Tom talked about, the overlay district. And can we protect the entire overlay?
All right.
Well, I'll say as far as I'm concerned, and I don't know if you have a council any problem, but with this, it's, as quickly as it's starting to evolve, if we need additional special sessions to get something approved, just, may I ask any problem with that? We're going to have to do it, I think so. I mean, if you wait.
I don't like it, but we'll have to do it.
I know, I'm just saying, but if you wait sometimes and you wait a month or two weeks or something, something can slide under the, it makes the next decision easier.
Thank you, Mayor, we're going to do those sessions, absolutely.
Anybody else have anything else?
Appreciate the work, a lot of detail.
Good job.
Thank you. You guys have a fantastic vision and I think this is, these two plans are going to be fantastic. And you're right, Nika was saying earlier that you guys are ahead of the ball from a lot of other cities. We've talked to some of the other cities and you're exactly right, so.
All jokes.
Thank you.
Nika did this presentation for I-35 meeting and I've talked to one of the TechStop reps and she said, we can't believe the number of calls we got after her presentation saying, well, why didn't you tell us to do this plan? She said, we didn't tell the city to do that plan, the city had that initiative, so. I compliment Nika on that, what she did for us on this project.
Anything else on that? Okay, then in accordance with Texas government, close up chapter D, section 551.072, property acquisitions, section 551.087, deliberation regarding the not settled negotiations will now convene into closed session.